Okay, I'd like to call this work session to order. Mr. Brenneman just stopped. No, there he is. There he is. Roll call, please. Roll call Gonzalez. Here Brenneman.
Here.
Haley.
President.
Mylan.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
You have a forum. Okay. Tonight during, well, first of all, for the agenda, are there anybody who attended a meeting or any board updates before we start? Or update from the general manager? I'm sorry.
This is Jeff. I'm going to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Six second.
This is Tom. My second.
Let's vote to approve or disapprove the agenda, please. Roll call Gonzalez.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Mylan.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, now we're ready for updates. Sorry, I wasn't following the agenda. I was just daydreaming. Anybody attend any meetings or have anything they'd like to report on? Hearing none. Mr. Johnson, is there anything from the GM you'd like to report on?
This one, we met yesterday on economic development. So cities trying to update a lot of old master plans and come up with a citywide comprehensive plan that also incorporates all the different area plans too. Yesterday was the first time I got to see a presentation on some of that work. It's gonna actually take quite a while. Wasn't a lot of, it wasn't a lot I was prepared to do in that meeting yesterday. So this was kind of a first look, knowing that they're gonna have to come back and present more information on what they're doing, how they're doing it through the timeline, here are the key stakeholders, here's the plans that seem to be working okay. It's gonna be some real makeover. And then here are a list of consultants that they're gonna employ along the same way, along the same time to so some of my questions was, want a good job on the plans that have not worked. You know, UG does have several master plans across the city, the Union Avenue, what the downtown, there's a Piper master plan.
Rose Town.
Rose Town master plan. So what have we taken away from that, all that work in the past? A lot of it still sits on the shelf. A lot of it hasn't resulted in anything that people can see today. So when you go back and do a refresh of that, how much of that is useful today? Is they as part of that master plan? They wanna do it away with the name master plan. I guess there's some negative option behind that too. So, but how much of that goes forward into a new plan, a comprehensive plan? And then how is that meeting governed across all of the, all of the unified government, KCK, Wyman County? There was talk about where those honor and that was feel sit into that, how much of it's county, how much of this is city? So it was a very, very preliminary meeting. It's really just getting kicked off. So there's a lot more information to come later. Just trying to go through and kind of paint a picture of where we are today and what was presented to us yesterday. So it's just thing continues unfolding. There's something a little bit more mature than where it is today that I can report on, and I'll certainly bring that back.
So will they honor the master plans that are sort of in place?
As much, as much as they can, is this what, what I'm taking away from it? Obviously, there is plans that really haven't turned into too much action. So I don't know what they do with that. I don't think they go back to the drawing board to say, okay, why has some, some of the plans that the neighborhood community wanted to seek out at that time, where the unified government wanted to try to go with economic development in certain parts of town? What happened with that plan? Why did we miss the mark as badly as we did in certain parts of the city? So I'm kind of looking forward to what, what all gets flushed out. And then again, they're bringing in four or five different consultants. So the question was, you know, how do we, how do we handle different type information, different, different type recommendations coming from all these different groups? And again, is zoning driving, are they the ones managing this? Is there gonna be another committee set up that's gonna oversee all this activity? Cause there's gonna be a lot, a lot of things going at once. The other thing that was talked about is making all these task force, the work from all the task force that the mayors have set in place and, and bringing that information back as much as, as much as can be brought back and make that a part of the comprehensive plan for economic development too. So I think there is a lot of thoughtful thinking right, right now. I think there's a lot, lot that still needs to get sorted through. And, and I don't know that we were anywhere close to that just yet. Again, this was the first time I saw the presentation. They didn't want to email out that to the group after the meeting. We didn't see it before the meeting. And they said they still wanted another couple of weeks to kind of work on it and fine tune it a little bit before we get copies of it.
Okay, anything else before we start on the other issue? I just generally called this next issue governance. I didn't know, is it dealing with the board? And I didn't know exactly what to title it, but I just kind of wanted to tie up a couple loose ends here as the my term of president is coming to an end. And so I had asked everybody, of course, to do their self-assessment. And so tonight, we're gonna talk a little bit about our board self-assessment and questions and comments about that. So Angela, do you have the compilation of?
This is every, yes.
Okay.
Merit actually does compile all the scores, the others. Which is what I did. If you look up.
They just, no matter who.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. They're just all.
And I think they're in alphabetical order.
So I thought we would kind of look at how we assessed ourselves and just kind of start with number one. And if you have anything you want to comment on or anything you feel like? The, the whole purpose of this was, you know, in relationship to our strategic plan, I'm hoping that in doing this, we'll take a a look at how we govern and is there a way that we can be better? What is it that we can do to start? So I'm not sure I can see all those numbers up there. Where are we for the first one?
This is just average score by, by performance area.
Okay.
Right. And then I think each one had a grading one to five, if I remember right.
Right. That was right.
But all those are the individual scores on the bottom. So yeah.
Okay.
All those.
So that was, is that question number one on the first one?
Question number one is, yes.
Okay.
The six questions are all to the left.
Okay, so actually, the first one just talks about our accountability, our, you know, doing our fiduciary duty and our sort of our statutory, statutory duties. And also the, the ethics and, and just the whole, do we follow Robert's rules? And I, I have to just say with some of the board members that, I mean, sorry, some of the visitors we've had at our board meeting, I'm sure that I didn't follow, follow Robert's rules on several occasions and I'm not trying to make excuses, but it was hard for me to tell somebody to sit down after they'd had their five minutes. So I'm, I'm very guilty of not, not following the rules on that particular one. So if you've had a chance to kind of look at number one, is there anything you want to discuss? Should have had these earlier, but I just didn't want to send them out by email. So.
Well, I mean, I guess from my standpoint, it would have been helpful to know that we were discussing these tonight, not just sort of the general topic of board governance. Cause certainly wasn't prepared. But so although I did bring mine home, just in case.
Okay.
You know, I gave this one, first of all, is I would have given a much higher scale two, but I, in fact, I said I would have given it a five. But the last two involving the public in key decisions and informing customer owners of utility performance and value. I just, I, I think we really need to improve in that greatly because I think that you know, certainly lately, we've had many members of the public join our meetings and they have expressed to us that they don't feel like they're involved in our key decisions. So.
I agree totally with what Rose just said. I gave it a three. And mainly because of, I thought we did very, we did very well on the first two, the fiduciary and statutory duties and comply with ethics and board norms. But I do think that we fall down on informing the customers of the utility value, the value of the utility.
That was a part.
Also involving the public in key, key decision. I think we could do, we could do a lot better in those, in those two areas.
I realized that in listening to comments that, that some of the people who came forward said, and I even made that in my closing comments last time that I made the realization that I haven't done a good job communicating the value that we give to the community. And and it's obvious to me that the public doesn't understand our value and that we haven't communicated that. So it will be a good thing for us to work on as we move forward.
I think it's interesting that most of us did give it a three and sort of someone seeing everyone else's, you know, and I didn't put in comments and, but I would like to say that in my time here, my brief time, we have this board and this utility has worked certainly to involve the public in key decisions. I don't know what it was like before, but we're audio visual now. For example, there's access by the public discussions that are had. There's certain ample times given now on every agenda for the public to
We always had that.
I don't know how much to excuse before, but at least from my perspective as, as a novice, to involve the public in key decisions, which is the line item here, there are certainly many options. I don't know what else might be done. I'm open to those suggestions, but the public has an opportunity now. That they may have all said, certainly it should be, maybe it could be amplified or put on there, but call in and participate in meetings. There's a place for public input during our regular meetings every time. Now, how do we inform them of, or the customers of our utility performance and value? That's a very broad net cast.
Well, it's pretty obvious that, that there, there's a lot of either misinformation and misunderstanding or just lack of understanding. So just making some of, well, like a few of the people that stayed and didn't leave after they had their time to speak said, have made the comments to me, well, I didn't know this or I didn't understand that. And I'm glad I stayed because I, so making it a learning process like it has been for me for all the time that I've been here. It's, I, I come wanting to learn something every day and hope that, but we as a utility need to figure out how to make the public understand our value because I don't know that they do.
I agree with that. I do. But I just, I just feel that as, as, as much as can be improved, that certainly there is a better effort, a good effort to involve the public in the decisions that have, now whether or anybody else listens is another question. But I think there is involvement for the public to express themselves in terms of the decisions that are made here. And I, I think we should at least give credit to that opportunity.
I would just say to that, David, if you look at some of the things that we did, like Rose's suggestion for the Economic Development Fund, some of the things that happened in that short period of time, I would say this board's listening.
And that's not the first that we've done. But you know, my, my question would be outside of like going to neighborhood meetings and things like that, how do you really? Number one, share the information and number two, gain insight? I mean, we don't have an open line of media communication or, or ways. I mean, the communication of what the board is doing and what the utility, moreover, what the utility is doing is, I mean, there are handouts that, you know, that go out and, and inserts. There are the the flyer that goes out four times a year. Things like, it's, it's really difficult to get the word out. You know, you can send things to people, but you can't make them read them. And you can't force them to ask the questions to be able to gain the insight and start the conversation. You know? I mean, I enjoy going to neighborhood meetings in my district and I feel like I have a pretty good relationship with most of the neighborhood groups and the leaders, but understand that represents maybe
Yeah, that's.
1% at the most of all the registered voters in my district, you know, well, of the actual voters that vote in my district, not the registered. The ones that actually in my district. So it's, it's very hard. You know, short of just going door to door and canvassing to be able to, to be able to gain that interaction with, with the customers, you know, with our.
Whether they take advantage of it or not, I think we need to make the effort to be out there and, and make those arguments to the, to the public and as much as, as much as we can. I, I enjoyed the focus groups that we did at the time. And I know that, you know, David had planned on doing some more of that with COVID broke out. I'd like to see us, you know, do some more along that line of focus groups. Cause that was very, very informative to all of us. I mean, to me, as to, you know, we thought we were weak here and they didn't, you know, not, they didn't necessarily you know, think so. And where we thought we were doing a good job, they, you know, didn't necessarily think that. So the focus groups I, I thought was, was good and that we should try to bring those back and, and enhance that.
One, one thing that I was thinking about over the holidays was, you know, if we're honest with ourselves and we talk about the committees that we have, rarely are committees meet. I, I'd say that for the most part, our committees are defunct. So I don't think that there's anything that prohibits us from just developing our own new committees. And one of them, one of the ones that I was thinking about would be a community engagement committee. The question is, you know, it would, it would have to start and we would have to come up with ideas on, on, you know, how can we best engage? And it's not gonna be, it's gonna have to be a multi-pronged attack because there's no way, there's no one solution as we know. It's going to get us in front of all of the stakeholders. So I think that one thing that wouldn't hurt was maybe in 2023, we, we develop some new committees and we sit down and we talk about how can we, you know, what are, what are really the things that we want to see change? Do we have, do we have a committee that is tasked with developing a quarterly calendar for work sessions? It says, these are the work sessions that the board is gonna drive for the next three months. And of course, we'd probably have to leave some in for emergency, you know, things that happen because there's always gonna be some, but, but I, I just think that that's, that's an area that we could better use to find ways to interact with and engage with, and not just the residential. I mean, the residential is the one that's your problem, but there's also the commercial and industrial. We can't forget them. They, they pay a lot of money into this utility and into our city. So they need, they need to be also, you know, we need, we need to have their feedback to make sure that what we're delivering is what best we can do with the money that we have. You know, we don't have unlimited funds. So therefore we have to be very judicious about how we spend them. But are the things that we're doing, the ones, you know, the ones that are above and beyond just the maintenance and, and distribution and production are the other ones, the best ways to spend the few dollars that we have, you know, for our outreach. How, how can we better engage with our community? So, and I think that, you know, it's, it's not something we're gonna solve today, but, but I think that we can make a concerted effort to, to assign some committees that, that can help us start looking at that, you know, on how we can better engage our customers. And at some point I could see a community engagement committee actually bringing, you know, if we have certain, if we have certain groups that are, you know, really looking for making an impact in a certain way, you know, maybe we have one of our meetings is specifically around that. We engage, we invite those, you know, the leaders of that group to, to come and, and have an open discussion with us and they can bring their literature that helps support their the direction that they want to see. And I mean, nobody gets it 100% their way, but it's a balancing act and we have to figure out, you know, how we best address as many of the concerns that we have.
Okay, I think I've heard from everybody on that one, Rose, except for you. What did you want to add to, or would you add anything to number one? Ways to engage when we fall short of that? Or to say the value of the community, of our utility to the community? Any ideas for that?
Um. Yeah, I mean, and we've certainly talked about this a lot. And I know that some of the stuff was put into the BPU connection into the insert, which is great. And, and you know, we focus on some of it sometimes. We can simplify a lot of what information we present. So it's understandable by even laypeople. And particularly when we're talking about the value that this utility brings to this community. And you know, I, I think Jeff's idea is, is a good idea. And I, I think it, it follows what I suggested at the last board meeting, and that was, we need to have some sort of community engagement representatives from the community that this utility meets with. You know, outside of the neighborhood groups, outside of the other ways. I mean, the industrial customers and large commercial customers, I mean, they, they have specific, special key account people here in BPU. Residential customers don't. And we're hearing from them that they feel that, right? And so if, if, if that's sort of the role that we, the board have to take on, so be it. But I, I think having a community engagement committee is good, but it isn't gonna work without the community. And I know you're not suggesting that, but but there's oftentimes we, we fill board meetings with things that could be filled with, I think, more useful information for the public. Particularly now that they have the opportunity to go back and review these meetings and potentially utilize the materials that are produced for these meetings. So.
You know, I would, I would second that especially. Yeah, I know it's, it's a fine balance between, between doing a presentation that, that gives a board what they need to make a decision or to, to satisfy that the decisions we made were justifiable. But getting them into more layman terms, I know that, that it's a challenge because there is a lot of technical that goes behind it. But I mean, it's something that I, I think would help at least start to start thinking about, you know, in the presentations where you're not, you know, present it like you're presenting it in a classroom, like you're walking into a classroom and you're, you're asked by your child to come and do a presentation about what you do or what this project was or what, you know, that is. And maybe go at it more like that because I'll be honest with you, there's, there's still times, and I've been here 12 years and there's still times that stuff is above, is above me. I mean, it's, it's, you guys are the experts. You can pay to do, be the expert. You know, I am not gonna come in here and try to tell you how to do your job because it would be screwed up because I don't, I, I wasn't trained in what your justice roles are, what your tasks are. But breaking them down to making them more simplified so that they're a little more understandable by, by board and the general public. Especially now that they are being telecast and saved where people can go back and it can be, it can be an educational tool for our stockholders. So they, they can go back and they can say, man, they were talking about, you know, this and I, I'm not sure what that is. And go back and try to find that one. And, and, and hopefully someday that we could actually like catalog with, with indexes tells us what the general topics were in that meeting that the recording so that people be like, yeah, I would want to understand more about the AQs. This is the meeting on June 2nd, 2019. This is the meeting that had that recorded. They go back and they can watch it and they can say, fine, I don't understand at all, but I, you know, I get the gist of it. You know, I understand what the need is and why we see the value of spending money to keep a, you know, an asset running. I just think that that could be very beneficial to, to both the board and to the public.
Well, and two things in particular that I think the staff has done a great job on putting into understandable terms for our customers are, you know, when Steve's team goes and, and fixes the water leaks, right? And we, we sort of watch that progression. We understand what that means if we don't have long-term. You know, we're not waiting for something to hap, I mean, we, we always are waiting for something to happen, but you know, sort of explaining this, how valuable this is as we do it along the way. And the other thing is the vegetation management and how cutting the trees back and making an emphasis on that has cut down on outages. I mean, those are, those are things I believe that, you know, people in our community can grasp easily. And you guys have done a good job of, of presenting those, both of those things.
That's a good example. And just to keep things moving, I have about five or six minutes for each issue. So we went way over on that. So on the second one, strategic direction and goals and kind of meeting, middle of the road there. Anybody want to comment on any of the things on that identifying the outcomes that enhance the long-term value to customers and the owners of the, to prove our, our specifically improve, approve the strategic plan that's long range goals.
I think that over the last couple of years that we've made, you know, huge strides in, in dealing with the strategic planning through the help of Hometown Connections and Steve Bandamir coming in and, and holding those, those sessions with us.
These are Steve's as we.
And so I think that, you know, that we've, we've come a long way, but we need to make sure that, that we follow up and make sure that the
Just send it on the shelf.
It's implemented. And it's not just, we do the work up front. Yeah, we need to do street planning. We draw this up, then put it on the shelf and nobody looks at it for another year or two years and you pull it out again. We need to, to make sure that throughout the year that we make a conscious effort to see that it is being implemented.
Don't treat it like the master plans for the city.
Yeah.
That happens frequently.
I know.
It's happened.
We need to audit, we need to audit that we're doing what we said we were gonna do.
That would be a good idea to do that. Okay, anybody else want to comment on that? Any ideas? Hopefully we can implement these going forward or some of them at least, or have more discussion. I do want to move on to monitor the achievement of the goals and the organization efficiency. That's sort of to the point you just made. Don't stick it on the shelf and never look at it again after we've discovered of what is that we want to work on strategically. We did not in our specific plan do any like key indicators too much. We talked about the parking lot, if you remember that, and those, those are things that we could go back and check on, do. We talked about the parking lot, if you remember that, and those, those are things that we could go back and check on throughout the next year to, to address really checking in on the strategic plan. Any other ideas for that? I don't know exactly how many. Was it five indicators that we came up with that we thought, I think five different ones? I actually did not bring those with me tonight, but checking back with those would be a good way to monitor that. Okay, the board relationship with the CEO. There was several bullets under that. Support his responsibility to lead the organization, compensate the CEO fairly at market value, comply with board members' limitations. Do not give direction to the CEO or staff or speak. You know, for the full board, provide written unified when possible direction to the CEO. And I think we've done a better job at that than we have in the past. Delegate authority to him and resources necessary, which of course is through the budgeting process that we just finished. And do a goal-based evaluation of the CEO every year, which we've accomplished that as well. Anybody want to add anything to that? Yeah, when I told you you had five minutes on each one, then now nobody's going to talk. Okay, let's move on to meetings. And I think there will be a lot of discussion hopefully here. They'll be fairly efficiently run and here to a proper decorum. And, and this is kind of, I want to touch back to when we've had so many visitors and guests lately. I, I feel like I've been at fault in, in having the proper decorum. I know when the gentleman came to the podium near the end of the meeting, at the last meeting, I, I didn't want to not recognize him and I didn't want to tell him, you need to go sit down, the time to speak is over, which I finally had to do, but personally I found that very difficult. And I don't know that I have adhered to the rules that I needed to. So going forward, if we're going to have more engagement, maybe we can all practice up on how we support one another or ideas for dealing with people who are angry or not happy with decisions that we've made. Or I'd be open to any.
Again, I'm, I, I don't have any other frame of reference than this last year with you as chair. And I'd like to commend you for running the meetings well. There's a certain decorum that you've been, again, I don't know what it was like here before. So, but from my observation, I'd like to say that I think you run them efficiently, properly, and with a certain level. And I, I just wanted to make that statement. I actually gave a five to how the, the meetings run. Been a lot of different situations with a lot of different committees and meetings and different, different over the last 30 years. And I think these have been admirably well, from my frame of reference.
And I've, I've heard what everybody said about, you know, more input on what takes place on the agenda. Some of the things you'd like to see and like to hear.
I think some of it comes down to, we're all passionate about what we do. You know, we wouldn't, you wouldn't volunteer to, to go into this role if you weren't passionate about, you know, helping the community. So I think that sometimes the passion does over, overwhelm us a little bit. And, and we, you know, I'm, I'm as guilty as anyone, you know, having to periodically take a step back and, and, and better, try better to hear what the other board members side is and not saying necessarily that you have to always power or accept the other ones. Change your, change your position for those, but at least understand others. Because, you know, as I've said before, the more brains we have working on a problem, the better, the more solutions we're going to come up with. And the better odds we're going to have finding a good solution that, that fits broad spectrum of concerns. So, you know, that's one of the things that, yeah, I gave a five, because I think that overall our meetings, we, we run our meetings pretty well. I think that we just really should kind of control our passion and, and respect for one another's.
I will have to add on this point that Bill has been very good to work with in saying, hey, can you take this off the agenda? Or can we condense the agenda? Can you make it? I had asked him for the last meeting to not put a lot on the agenda, because I knew we'd have a lot of guests. And I wanted everybody to have a chance to hear. So I appreciate that, Mr. Johnson, for working with me on trying to, you know, get to that, that point. So.
I, I will reiterate my comment earlier about, I would like to see the board take charge of the work session agendas. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that, that we, you know, need more education on. And I would say that, that when you're going to have a technical discussion, you know, versus, versus the presentations that are done during a regular session. I think that the more technical discussions can happen in the work session where people can still hear it and get an idea. But then later they'll see a presentation that's, that's, you know, at some point in the future, a presentation that'll bring it down to a little more layman terms. But, but I think that this is, this is the forum for us to really, as a board, drive the meeting more than the other.
Are we still on board meetings?
Yes.
I'm not sure the board understands the purpose of the board meeting. Now, I rule as board members. Let me emphasize what I'm trying to say. We are, we're not having a hearing. It's not a court. Not here to debate. We're going to be respectful. And we all have two things to do. Listen and refer. That's it. Let me say it again. Listen and refer. That's it. Somewhere along the line, this board has never been told what's wrong with, or they forgot. Never been told. But my experience for 30 years, they diminished because we go and debate. Ah, I'm not, no, I don't need that. Ms. Jones, you'll bill this $40. And if you made an error, you did something wrong, so forth, we listen. I don't have a computer at home. I don't know the circumstances. I know her name, her address, her concerns. All I can say is listen, Mrs. Johnson, refer to your proper staff to take care of that. Call it out, take it in the hallway and go with it. Folks, that's it. Now you can interpret that any way you want to. I'm true to the hat. The way this board is functioning, we listen. For, don't mention for direction. You don't have a rules, regulation, computer, knowledge, set. And when I hear people come here, because we're in totally, kind of one meeting, just raise cane, but anything concerned. You know what? I've said it many, many times. BPU is a bill collector. Nobody likes bill collectors. I'm number one. The Friday department don't sell bill every month. The police, UG, school board, deputy house board, nobody sends out a bill every month, but this organization. So they're unhappy because they got to pay what they used a month before they ever paid. But even all of that, we listen, refer. The good conclusion or resolution will be to be done. Now sit there and challenge them, you be beating those people. That is not our role. It spreads the other order. You should call, point of order when that happens. Board members, we're not here to debate that person. I don't care how sincere it is. They come here for a reason, express their concerns, write it all, misinform, what have you. I, I don't know why they come out here until they come to that podium, explain the reason to be in here. So it's the most thing. Now, if you've got some kind of passion for people, folks, you got this what I'm trying to tell you. Listen and refer. The one woman came here before she raised all kinds came about what happened. Wow. The bottom line of that came out to be all kinds of problems. We didn't know what she had, because we don't know she had. Listen, refer. All the way. Boy, they probably got that in, that we really got truth up about that. If we were wrong and, and we made all time mistakes and all kind of things that we did some wrong, we called, we almost challenged her. But she was correct. She was saying, we don't know. So I'm just telling you folks to be curious of people. Listen, refer staff to do that. That's it. Now, this big one we got there by hollering, screaming about what's wrong with who got, who would think of putting that air. I don't know what the guy he does. I think he's a, it's candy for boy, remember? He's out there every, every week. And most of the challenge and make you feel look bad and everybody look bad. Now, all you can do is listen. Yeah. Before, if you want, have no conclusion about nothing, just want to make you look bad, I guess. So those kind of folks, we just listen. What can we say? We came to put them in jail. They have another thing to call their god out. So folks, listen what the people got to say. Keep talking about all this stuff right here. Communication, communication mean the listening, folks, maybe we don't understand it. Communication is listening. Not debate, listening. Only we can solve these stuff here, we listen to people, listen to each board member. Because someone say, we don't listen, you're not going anyplace. I think today we tried a six time, kind of try to get a speaker to the house, six time. You may go 50 times we're going, because nobody is listening. What I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Bob. We'll try to do a better job. I want to also mention in this particular time that I appreciate Angela keeping us on, on the straight and narrow for open meetings requests and all of that. So all this stuff is eligible for that. So.
Well, if you, if you go back, you don't have a copy. I suggest each of board members pick up the ethics code we have in place, read it for yourself. It's very clear. Listen and be further.
Okay. If you're through, we're going to move on to the very last one. And I know as part of this self-assessment, I wanted to challenge each of you to go outside of the BPU and try to learn one thing that you can bring back to the rest of us this year, whether it be at the APBA or the AWWA national conferences or something you've learned on Zoom. I know, Tom, you're really good at that, when you listen to something on Zoom and come back and share with us. So I'd like to challenge each of you this year to do that.
We know if KMU is going to have a meeting again this year.
Yeah.
We're going to return.
KMU, APBA.
Yeah, I, I think I just saw on, on the APBA website, some of the individual things they'll have through the year for 2023. So would anybody else like to comment before we end and?
Well, I'd say this is, uh, this is the time I can recall some evaluation. So it was nice, nice to have this opportunity. So I, I think that the board does, you know, and generally the board seeks out further education, you know, between, I think all of us get publications from, in power, so that we can kind of keep up on the ones that are too technical. And then, uh,
Well, I'm most very rare say, listen to our customers. Some people I told didn't even look customer. You should, I listen.
Yeah. That's why I like to go to meetings.
Some things, I'm going to say them instead of. I looked at some of the people signed in. Oh, boy. Some addresses were not correct. Some addresses live in Kansas, Kansas. Some addresses got the bone zip code. My address is 1515 North Third Street. The address is 66109. That's in Piper, folks. The address don't even match. When I dress in Sim Street, right in Miller Street, I have all those addresses. I did my own investigation. I have checked out many, many of those addresses. Zip code don't match the name residence.
Well, we'll have to just listen to your advice, Bob, and listen, if, if we are, if we are to be, like you said, we're, we're just going to turn into good listeners. And I, I, I'd like to applaud all of you for doing that. I think you did a good job in handling all the visitors that we've had so far and looking forward to how we're going to deal with them in the future. And how my goal, I think, will be to how we will communicate the value of the utility to our constituents and our customers and our other owners of the utility. And be glad for any kind of input for any of that. And with that, I am through, unless anybody else has any comments they'd like to make. And Tom, I understand you're going to have surgery and.
The 16th, Monday, the 16th.
And so you will, do you think you'll be present by Zoom?
I, if, I'm assuming or I'm anticipating that I'll get out of the hospital the following day.
Okay.
Which would be Tuesday and be home Tuesday and be able to be on Zoom.
On Wednesday. And David, you'll already be in to pick up, but you think you'll be free to either be.
Definitely by Zoom, but hopefully.
Hopefully in person.
I'd like to plan to be in person.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Thank you all for, for going to.
For indulging you.
For indulging me and for going to all the links and remember to challenge you to learn something new about our, our industry as we go forward for 2023. Topper, a motion to adjourn.
This is Jeff, move to adjourn.
A roll call. Been moved and segmented.
Roll call, Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brennaman.
Hi.
Haley.
Hi.
Mylan. Lavinny Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
A little break before we start.